And unmute, okay. We're ready.
Okay, we're going to call this special meeting of the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, call the meeting to order on October 4th at 6:00 PM, and start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all. All right, we'll call.
Okay. Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elway.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
All present, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I declare a forum. This is a special meeting, so we will stick to the agenda as presented. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
One item, Mr. Mayor, we do have September financial statements.
Yeah, that's on the agenda. Well, I just, yeah.
Oh, you have a September?
Okay. So, yeah, we will do the financial statements.
I would like to approve the agenda as submitted, or as amended, which is...
As amended, because we do have financial statements.
Okay.
We'll have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. We have minutes from the September 20th meeting to approve. Any questions about the minutes? Do I go enter any motion to accept the minutes?
I have a motion to accept the minutes.
I have a motion to accept the minutes. Ken Mills, second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving on to ceremonial recognitions, proclamations, and memoriam. We need to, and it would be proper to mention that Connie Eaton passed away on Sunday. I think everybody knows Connie. She was a valued member of the community, both her and Jack, the boarder you can ever imagine for the City of Holiday Island. Connie most recently served on the ambulance board, so she will certainly be missed. I believe her visitation was Thursday, or in that Nelson funeral. Anyway, you want to make any comments? Don't try it.
For the record, she also served in the fire department as the EMT.
Okay, moving on then to reports, financial statements.
Okay, I've set off the September financial statements. They showed the balance sheet, total cash balance of $358,910. Of that, $191,892 was in the general fund, $75,000 in the general fund reserve, and $92,017 in the street fund. In the general fund for the month, there were receipts of $26,622, $23,310, and that was our share of the county. Sales tax and $2,313 was in the net salary from the state. And there was $45 for baguettes sold and $33 for our share of the property taxes collected. Expenses totaled $8,457, so we had a gain in the general fund of $17,604 for the month. The street fund receipts were $19,578. Of that, $2,133 was for our share of the county property tax for street. So, I assume the significant part of the property taxes will be paid to us in probably November and December, as they're due here at the October 15th. We paid out $3,400 on the street repair contract, so the street fund gave $16,178 for during the month of September. And we ended the month with $75,000 in the reserve fund. There was no change in that during the month. Questions?
I thought we had to pay the district.
At the end of the year, by the end of the year, we have to pay them for the...
We're not paying them.
No, we're not. We have to pay them at the end of the year. However, Ken pointed out in our budget meeting that the street fund was going to have a pretty substantial balance at the end of the year. So, before we finalize the budget, you might want to take a look at... Now, we don't want to spend a lot of that because we want to have a good amount in reserve for matching when we go after a grant again. However, we could probably afford to do some, you know, project for next year. So, if somebody wants to make a recommendation to me on what we might do with some of that money and, you know, work with the appropriate spend, I'm willing to consider input before we finalize the budget. Anything else on financials? We're in pretty good shape.
I'll move that we accept the financials for September.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Lynn Dumas and a second by Linda Graves to accept the financial report. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financials are accepted. Will dispense with committee reports and stick to the new budget or the new business reasons for the meeting tonight? Starting out with ordinance number 2022-012. I will entertain a motion that we pass ordinance 2022-012, an ordinance establishing a police department and authorizing contracting with Carroll County, with the County of Carroll, State of Arkansas, and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District to provide such services for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas.
So, move.
Lynn, we have a motion to pass the ordinance. Do I have a second? I second it. Ken seconded it. We'll read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-012. An ordinance establishing a police department and authorizing contracting with the County of Carroll, State of Arkansas, and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District to provide such services for the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated 1252102 states that the governing body of the city of the second class or incorporated town may establish a police department and provide law enforcement services for the city of the second class or incorporated town that will most effectively preserve the peace of the city of the second class or incorporated town, secure the citizens from personal violence, and safeguard their privacy. And that, in lieu of establishing a police department under this section, the governing body of a city of the second class or incorporated town may enter into a contract or enter local agreement for law enforcement services with an existing law enforcement agency. And whereas Arkansas Code Annotated 16171203 states that any town or city that has a police department but does not have a district court may contribute to the operational expenses of the nearest district court in the county where the town or city is located pursuant to a written agreement. And whereas the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas wishes to contract with the County of Carroll and the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District to have the Carroll County Sheriff Department provide law enforcement services to the city. And whereas said contract is necessary in order for the City of Holiday Island to establish an interlocal agreement with the district court, not be ordained, not be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that A) there shall be established for the City of Holiday Island a police department reporting to the mayor. B) in lieu of staffing and equipping the police department, the mayor of the City of Holiday Island is authorized to enter into a contract with the Holiday Island Suburban Improvement District and the County of Carroll, State of Arkansas, to have the Carroll County Sheriff Department provide law enforcement services. That said, the contract must be approved by the City Council prior to signing, perhaps and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of 10/4/2022. Approved, Dan D. is mayor. Adad said, Wesley Stelly recorded the trade.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance?
I'm wording violent a little bit. I just didn't understand why it said, "Sign." If you read it, it sounds like we're entering into a contract with HISA and the county. Actualities is HISA and Holiday Island entering into a contract.
It's one contract with three signers, so three parties signing, so it's a long way to look at it, I guess.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. This does not have an emergency clause. Does that mean we have three readings?
Yes, I thought of that while he was reading it, that it should have had an emergency clause. But at this point, I would recommend that we pass it on the first reading, and at the next meeting, we can vote to suspend the second reading and pass it on the third reading.
Okay.
And I believe that's...
If that's possible, that's...
I think that's possible.
Okay.
It's not possible to amend it to include the emergency clause?
I wouldn't have any way of adding the wording to it, so... We have a secretary, I have a lot of options in that question. Could we add the wording from one of the other ordinances? Do they have emergency clauses tonight? Well, they're...
You need a reason kind of specific to this particular ordinance, though, generally.
Well, the reason would be that we, at our workshop, whatever meeting we had last week, we talked about our wishes to have this executed and in place by the governor of the party.
That's true.
We don't have a fourth meeting that we have.
Just a thought, if the forum court still has to have it on their agenda, and HISA has to have it on their agenda, their main, we need decent revision, so it might give us some comfort to change that in the second or third reading, if we needed to, so we can get it done.
Yeah, I think we...
It's a good point.
We would have our regular meeting the day after this forum. And, you know, if we need a third meeting, we can call a special meeting. We would need a third, so we can suspend the meeting. So, I would recommend that we go ahead and pass it, and do some... We might as well take it tonight, two more readings. Any other discussion?
But just one other question. I'm trying to fight with not involving all the meetings at the forum, the forum court. Is there any way that we can kind of push that, or is it show up at the beginning? To push that?
Well, if that's the meeting, we probably wouldn't do that here. Some of the things you remind me, I never know what my hearing driver...
The main thing is, if it's not on their agenda, it's an issue that that's the key to having a meeting in the forum.
Ken, can I ask you to remind us to attend the forum court meeting?
And we can go to that rather than go to the ACD?
Well...
What? What means?
It's the first, it's the third Monday night.
Okay. Ken, I...
Third Monday.
...have a good time to bother Jack with this, but before the meeting, I need to make sure it's on the agenda. I can call Bob with it.
There you go.
Yeah, I'd recommend calling the judge.
Yeah. Any other discussion on the ordinance?
A motion.
Well, the motion was made, so I just call for a full call vote.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, if that's on the first reading, I'll hand out the copies of the whole thing. All right, next on the agenda is ordinance 2022-013. An ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for calendar year 2023, and requiring an emergency. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance 2022-013?
Second.
Jerry made a motion to pass. Lynn, second it. We can read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2022-015. An ordinance levying a tax on real and personal property in the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, for calendar year 2023, and requiring an emergency. Whereas Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 2673202 states that the governing body of the city or town must serve by the rate of taxation levied through the county court annually. And whereas this must be done prior to the time fixed by law for the forum court to levy taxes, Arkansas Code Annotated ACA 1494904B, now be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section 1, the real property mileage rate for maintenance and operations, a tax of zero mils is hereby levied on all real property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Check section 2, property mileage for maintenance and operation, a tax of zero mils is hereby levied on all personal property within the city limits of Holiday Island, Arkansas. Section 3, the city clerk is hereby directed to find a copy of this ordinance with the Carroll County Clerk as soon as possible after the passage of this ordinance. Emergency clause, since this ordinance is required to be submitted to the county forum court prior to the levying, meeting, and emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effective immediately upon passing. Passed and approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date of 10/4/2022. Approved, Dan D. is mayor. Adad said, Wesley Stelly recorded the trade.
Any special on the ordinance? Not, we'll call move.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
The ordinance passes. Do we need to hold on to emergency?
Since there's an emergency clause, I need a motion to accept the emergency clause. I make the motion.
I'll second.
And Lynn...
Lynn.
Lynn, seconded a motion to accept the emergency clause. Is there any discussion? We'll call vote, aye.
Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
If the motion passes with, or the ordinance passes with the emergency clause, you can get a copy to come... All right, next on the agenda is the third reading, ordinance 2022-006. An ordinance about implementing zoning regulations in order to clarify zoning regulations, establishing fees and penalties for violation thereof, and for other purposes for the City of Holiday Island. Do I have a motion to pass this ordinance on the third reading?
I'll move that we pass this ordinance on the third reading.
Lynn made a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Ken seconded it. Want to read just the ordinance, we're not going to read all 156 pages of this on...
I thought I can read mine.
I can read it all.
He's probably have it memorized.
I can read first page. Ordinance 2022-6, an ordinance adopting planning and zoning regulations in order to clarify zoning regulations, establishing fees and penalties for violation thereof, and for other purposes for the City of Holiday Island. Whereas pursuant to ACA 1456416, the Holiday Island City Planning Commission, HICPC, has determined it necessary to develop zoning regulations for the entire planning area of Holiday Island to provide districts of compatible uses for unified development for the elimination of nonconformance and other matters of general welfare of the city. And whereas pursuant to ACA 1456422, public notice was given to the cities of the cities intent to adopt the planning and zoning regulations, the zoning map and the zoning map table, and advised that copies of the document were available on the city website for public review and examination. And whereas, after due notice, as required by law, the HICPC held a public hearing for all persons desiring to be heard regarding certain new planning and zoning regulations, zoning map and zoning map table. And whereas, after thorough consideration of comments and views expressed by all interested persons, said HICPC, by resolution HICPC R22-5 on August 10, 2022, has certified, adopted, and recommended that the planning and zoning regulations, zoning map and zoning map table should be considered for adoption by the City Council of Holiday Island. Whereas all comments, views, suggestions, recommendations have been considered and addressed by the City Council. And whereas, whoa, I'm sorry, my screen jumped to my cursor. Okay. Whereas the City Council of Holiday Island now finds it to be in the best interest of the citizens of Holiday Island and desires to adopt said planning and zoning regulations in its entirety, including the zoning map and zoning map table, by ordinance to better provide for the clarification of terms and the use of the zoning regulations. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Holiday Island, Arkansas, section 1, that the documents entitled planning and zoning regulations, the zoning map and the zoning map table attached hereto and made a part of this ordinance are hereby adopted. Section 2, that all resolutions, ordinances, and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to the extent of such conflict, are hereby repealed. Section 3, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, definition, fee, fine, or other provisions or portion of this ordinance, or the planning and zoning regulations, or the planning zoning map, or the zoning map table shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. The same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance as a whole in any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional. And the remaining provisions of this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, unforceable, or unconstitutional provision or provisions have never, had never been contained herein. Section 4, that the city recorder treasurer shall maintain two signed copies of this ordinance kept on file in the office of the city recorder treasurer in the city office, 110 Woodsdale Drive, Holiday Island, Arkansas, and a digital image for public inspection on the city website.
Okay, is there any discussion on the ordinance?
I've been working on some of the documents, they're in the text, and I discovered a problem in section 12.03, in the procedure for filing conditional use applications. And the problem is, the date that we have in there for a deadline for the filing is the third Tuesday of the month. That only works for a few months where there's five Tuesdays. It doesn't give us enough time so that we can have a meeting in the following month. So, I recommend that we revise 12.03, section 8, paragraph 2, to say the second Tuesday is the deadline for filing.
And the documents posted on the website right now contain that modification?
No, they all have the third Tuesday on them. But I think with our vote tonight, we could accept that modification. I can change them, then when I get the signed copies, I'll recreate the document. I'll update it.
Then I think we should restate the motion to pass the ordinance to include that change.
Did I make the motion to approve it initially? Who made the first motion?
You made the initial.
I'll withdraw that original motion and move that we approve this ordinance 06 with the revision of section 12.03 to the second Tuesday.
Okay, can you provide us with that revision?
I will.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? Lynn made the amended motion, and Jerry seconded it. So, is there any other discussion? Not with the move to the full call vote?
Do we need a second to the amended motion?
Yeah, Mr. Jerry seconded.
Jerry? Okay. Councilmember Dumas.
Aye.
Councilmember Elway.
Aye.
Councilmember Graves.
Aye.
Councilmember Mills.
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman.
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
All right, the ordinance passes on the third reading. It's now official. Here's two signed copies. And just for the record, Lynn provided copies, nice pretty colored copies of the zoning map to have on file in the office. Obviously, the digital version of this will be on the website, but this way we'll have nice, pretty colored copies for people to look at in the office if they wanted. Wes, you can have those. All right, moving on. An ordinance authorizing a district court sharing agreement between the Holiday Island... Between the Holiday Island...
Need city in there.
...freements between the... Should say city.
Yeah.
You know, catch that until you need. I looked at it several times too. Authorizing a district court cost sharing agreement between the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance twenty-two dash zero one four? Motion to pass ordinance twenty-two dash zero one four. I'll second. And Mills made a motion to pass the ordinance, and Pat Elwood seconded it. Now we'll read the motion, or we'll read the ordinance, the ordinance actually contains the district court cost sharing agreement, however, for purposes of brevity, I think we will just read the ordinance itself, not the entire cost sharing agreement. Everyone's seen the agreement.
There's a couple questions that we're gonna read first.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two oh fourteen. An ordinance authorizing a district court cost sharing agreement between the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas Holiday Island has, by ordinance, two thousand twenty-two oh twelve, established a police department, a Holiday Island police department, that does not operate its own district court, and, whereas Eureka Springs operates a district court in close proximity to Holiday Island, and whereas Holiday Island wishes to have the cases generated by the Holiday Island Police Department and code enforcement, thus given to the Carroll County District Court, Eureka Springs Department, the Eureka Springs District Court, and, whereas Arkansas Code Enotating sixteen seventeen twelve oh-three requires that an ordinance for Holiday Island prosecute the cases generated by the Holiday Island Police Department and code enforcement in the Eureka Springs District Court, the written agreement must be entered into between the governing bodies of Holiday Island and Eureka Springs, which are the political subdivisions that contribute to the operational expenses of the Eureka Springs District Court. Now be it intervened by the City Council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that the mayor of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to enter into the following district court cost sharing agreement with the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and further is determined that the need to begin processing citations for violation is immediate and an emergency exists. This ordinance will become effective on passage, upon passage. Fast approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date, ten four two thousand twenty-two. Approved, then appeals mayor, a desk, Wesley Stelly, recorded, ready. And any discussion on the ordinance? And? The ordinance or the agreement?
No, do you want to ask? First question is, I think you said, didn't affect you. Right? It's at the top of page three, if you're looking for it. Beginning on January twenty-two. We not want that, assuming that we're not going to get to comment? Before we get to the share contract goes through first of November, we may have cases given in the fourth quarter.
Probably not.
It's pretty unlikely that anything will happen, that facts. We have any indication of cases amended in October? Or is it? Yeah, the only other thing, the city of Florida, you, you got a bad zip code, you have to answer. Oh, seven three one five.
What?
I don't see where it was first, yeah, it started first. There's, there's a lot of twos that have to drop between now and the end of the year. Well, yes. It's just that. Eureka Springs. Eureka Springs, we have to find a prosecuting attorney and contact with them. I think January first is a good name to target to get started. And I will correct that definitely. You can put fingers out now for the prosecution attorney. Yeah. And we'll, we'll talk about the prosecution attorney. That was planned before we were in the island. Some of the people will do anything to get out of working with us. I'm pretty sure that, at all times. We're not going to have that many cases. Any other discussion on the ordinance? Will call vote?
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elway?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Fair ordinance passes, it does have an emergency clause. There is an emergency clause.
Yeah.
It's just a sentence.
Yeah. Since there's an emergency clause, I'll entertain a motion to accept the emergency clause. I made a motion to accept the emergency clause, and made a motion to accept the emergency clause, do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn seconded it. Will call vote on the emergency clause? Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elway?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, the beach five, of your signature, Holiday Island, he's a huge stone as well.
All right, I will retrieve all the copies and take those corrections. I read it, I read it, I didn't see him.
I didn't see it till tonight.
I know, asleep at the wheel.
And from years of experience, that if you're trying to prove your own writing, you read what you wanted to write, not what you actually wrote.
Very true.
All right, next on the agenda, resolution on social media policy.
Prosecuting attorney.
Prosecuting attorney.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, no, I have my papers under order here. All right, ordinance number twenty-two two dash zero one five. An ordinance to create position of prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance twenty-two two dash zero one five? I'll move. Jerry made a motion to approve.
Second.
Lynn seconded it, and agreed the ordinance. Ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash zero one five. An ordinance to create the position of prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Whereas the ordinance two thousand twenty-one zero zero one authorize the appointing of a city attorney for representation regarding legal matters for the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, and, whereas the city of Holiday Island feels that the duties of the city attorney in civil matters are distinct and different from the duties of prosecuting cases in district court, and therefore deems it to be expedient and appropriate to create the position of prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island. Now therefore be it intervened by the City Council of the city of Holiday Island, Arkansas, that section one, the position of prosecuting attorney for the city of Holiday Island being created, and it should be distinct and different from the position of city attorney. Section two, the position of prosecuting attorney be appointed by the mayor with approval of the city council. Section three, that the prosecuting attorney is not required to be a resident of Holiday Island. Section four, the compensation will be on an hourly basis, but the rate of compensation should be negotiated by the mayor. Section five, due to the fact that the city of Holiday Island is entering into a cost sharing agreement with the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, relative to the operation of district court, an emergency is seen to exist, and this ordinance will become effective upon passage. Fast approved by the City Council of Holiday Island, Arkansas, on this date, ten four two thousand twenty-two. Approved, then appeals mayor, a desk, Wesley Stelly, recorded, ready. Any discussion on the ordinance? But we can move directly to a roll call vote? Councilmember Pittman?
Oh, boy. Not asleep.
Whoa.
Will we vote? All right, all right, everybody. Okay, Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Elway?
Aye.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Since we have an emergency clause, we made a motion to accept the emergency clause. Can we make a motion to accept the emergency clause?
I'll second.
Lynn seconded it. Any discussion? Will call vote on the emergency clause? Councilmember Pittman?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Elway?
Aye.
Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
All in favor, Mr. Mayor?
I have the other copies, I'll sign.
All right, now, moving on to resolution on social media policy. Resolution twenty-two two dash zero one zero. A resolution establishing a social media policy for officials of the city of Holiday Island. Do I have a motion to pass this resolution?
I'll move that we pass resolution twenty-two two dash ten.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Lynn made a motion, Lynn seconded it. Again, I think for brevity, we will read the ordinance, and the policy is attached to the ordinance, but we will just read the ordinance itself, and we can have discussion on the whole thing on this day. Resolution number two thousand twenty-two oh ten. A resolution establishing a social media policy for officials of the city of Holiday Island. Whereas the city council finds that it is in the best interest of the city of Holiday Island to adopt a social media policy for public officials who use social media, and, whereas the First Amendment of the United States Constitution does not limit elected or appointed officials' actions on their genuinely personal accounts solely in their private capacity, and, whereas the social media pages have become one of the most important venues for constituent engagement of government officials in modern society, in a number of recent cases, courts have held that it faces on government official's social media pages, where members of the public and comment are subject to the First Amendment, and consequently that removing comments posted by members of the public may subject government officials to liability. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, that the City Council hereby adopts and approves the city of Holiday Island social media policy for public officials attached hereto as exhibit eight, that this resolution and attached exhibit eight will remain in effect until such time as they are established by the city municipal code. Fast adopted by the mayor and city council of the Holiday Island, Carroll County, Arkansas, on this fourth day of October two thousand one-two. Appeals mayor, a desk, Wesley Stelly, recorded, ready. And, attached? Attached to the policy. All right? Yes, attached is a social media policy. Any discussion on the ordinance or the social media policy?
Is that, it says for officials, is that elected or?
Elected or appointed.
Elected or appointed, not employees.
Correct. There's a social media policy in the employee handbook or employees?
The only thing that I didn't see, I, if you were, there was a statement anywhere about making correction, trying to make corrections to misinformation that's out there. But, there's also been cases where they come through and just ask questions. How would I handle that? Just ignore it.
They should come to the city council later and ask questions.
They don't, I mean, that's not a problem, just we've got all this stuff that we shouldn't do, and it doesn't solve the problem of misinformation, because somebody's got to monitor it, somebody's got to crack the response, and, I mean, several of them, if you don't look at it, not looking into the sites, I'm pretty much ignoring them.
The policy was drafted to protect the city and the city officials, and it tells us an instruction of if we do respond on social media, how to do that, so that you don't reflect badly on the city or other city officials.
Well, we, we all signed the whole conduct, which included that of the thing. Again, I've been pushing a social media policy, basically, the one sense of dignity or got corrected in the installation, there's not a structure in this to do that.
The, the problem that I see with, I, I think there is a structure here for doing it with a qualification. If you want to respond to somebody that's putting incorrect information on, on the website, you can say, you can use the disclaimer, I'm the city council, but this is my response, not the city's response. And the reason for that is, you know, you know, this, this, this policy is going to be in existence forevermore, possibly, until it's changed. And... And so there's, there's nothing that would prevent somebody, you know, a, an elected official or an appointed official from maliciously putting information up in social media that is incorrect. But if they don't have that disclaimer in there, that it's their opinion, then they, they're representing the city. And they're putting out bad information.
Then that, that becomes another. I mean, that's just, that's just city council when Ken Mills or Pat Elwood is finding, and it's not an official correction by the city. What do you? I don't know what you, I mean. Pat, I don't have any problem with the city website, but on our private social, we can't. We tell somebody what to do on Facebook, whether it's their own person or anyone? They're not, no, they're always sites, what's happening, watch now, and, you know, we've got people, you know. I don't do any of those, but that's, I don't know what you're talking about. And. Well, that's not a problem. I, I. They accept, they, the ones that use those sites are setting the narrative on issues, and we're ended up days, weeks later trying to put out a fire. I mean, you can deny that that's where we are, that that's exactly right, we know we're smoking. No, I, I, I'm not denying that that's what we are, I mean, that's a problem with the whole country, doesn't matter if it's our city, or what, and didn't really do a lot of it, other than actually through our website. Well, then I might as well feel a hell of a lot better to get this information out there. Well. I'm not going to be going to, actually, well, who's going to be doing that and correcting that? We have never been. That's my point. I know, but I don't know how we could do that.
Jerry, there's nothing in this that says you can't do that on your own. It doesn't say you can't do that. It says you can if you use the disclaimer. And then just correct the information.
Following from my understanding, that's the city's address. You just have to state the dis- your position, your, your information.
The suggestion disclaimer is the following information is my understanding of the situation, and not necessarily that of the city of Holiday Island or other city officials, end quote. And then go ahead and give your piece. You pace that in the front end of each one of them, you'll never expose the city to any charge of doing something wrong, saying something wrong, leading the wrong, influencing others. And that's part of the problem too, that some of the research I did, that as city council members posting on social media, you could be accused of influencing the opinion of others in a public forum, or in a forum that isn't a public meeting.
I understand that, that's why.
That's why.
We need to have a official response. I mean, that need to be in dialogue, where if they say that something is green, and we know it's blue, we ought to get somebody, the mayor, the clerk, or somebody, say, "That's wrong, it's green." It's not good.
I think it's, I think it's a lot to ask to have one person like the mayor answer every post on every social media site, because they're likely not going to see them all. And, you know, we run into them haphazardly ourselves, just because we happen to be there at the right time to see them. And I, I'm in agreement with Lynn in about using a disclaimer. I'm not, I don't have a problem with saying, "Hey, this is the way I see it, I don't speak for the city. If you want to get the, you know, perfect information, come to a city council meeting, and the mayor will talk to you about that issue." But I don't have a problem with, with, you know, adding a little disclaimer to a comment, and, you know, putting my understanding out there.
I don't know. I experienced it anytime you tried to correct me, it doesn't, doesn't work anymore.
True.
I, I haven't polled any of the other mayors or anything else, but my hunch would be that, um, that others municipalities have made the determination not to try to police social media. It, it stood, it would be an endless task. It'd be like trying to, you know, trying to police MSNBC and Fox News, you know. It's just a full-time job. So, um, if it, if it really gets out of hand, and really starts to affect our ability to function as a city, then we probably have to, you know, take some sort of a stand on it. Um, other than that, I think the best approach would be for any one of us to say it. You know, this is my personal input on this, um, but, you know, my information is this on this topic. And, and then we'd go with that, but in most cases, I mean, I can only go by experience. Every time I've tried to be helpful on social media, it just turns into, you might as well poke a stick in a beehive.
Well, I know, if the way we responded to some, I go back to the legislative demand to the thing you read into the reference when we were talking about trash and what we want. Well, that, she thought of that, I said that to him, I maintain that now.
Yeah, I know, I, I should have done, I fully admitted.
And, and that would then just say, "Ma'am, you know, you can submit that, but this is a trash thing." And because she had got this campaign going on social media, we had to respond in the moment. We had shot that down, when she was going with the nineteen ninety-two report or something, that there is factual information that we can set the record straight.
Well, I think that, you know, I think the policy does allow for any elected or appointed official to voice their opinion about setting the record straight. They just have to, um, they have to state the disclaimer that it's their input, that they're not, you know, speaking in an official capacity for the city. You know, without that, there's going to be problems down the road, I guarantee it.
Well, also, it just, I think Lynn mentioned this too, but we might misstate something if, if, and, you know, that disclaimer kind of helps us, again, not get in trouble for doing that. We're all, not without fault, me included, you know, I misstate things all the time, have to apologize, "Oh, I got that wrong," so.
Never admit your own. The mother way. I, I think, I think the policy is as good as written. Um, you know, there, the, it, it's, uh, for all practical purposes, it's a voluntary policy anyway. We refer to, you know, disciplinary action or something in here, but in actuality, the city has no authority to take disciplinary action against an elected official. We can't remove an elected official from office. Above, the only thing we could do would be to censure somebody if they do something very egregious. But, you know, it is for all practical purposes a voluntary policy, and it, it is intended as much as anything to protect the city.
I had one question under the page three, under the paragraph called professional use, where you talk about official city media sites, what would those be?
It's our city website, right now it's the only official city website, the only official social media we have.
Okay.
So if.
So everything else we're doing is just on a personal basis?
Yeah, it could be your own Facebook, Instagram, whatever account, or it could be posting on other people's accounts.
That's why we didn't post those agenda posts on all of the social media sites.
So is that considered authorized by the mayor?
In a meeting, we decided we would use those social media sites to post it.
He says, he says.
Way back when.
He says, when you put it on the media sites.
Well, he, yes, he, he does authorize me to do that all the time, I think. Okay.
I think we have permission to do that, yeah.
Okay.
There's quite a bit in here, and we're going to put some official sites, which, I would put a little bit, because I heard what goes on our official sites do often.
Yeah.
As access is supposed to be on there, I don't know whether they're moving.
Lynn.
Lynn and I co-author, co-administered. So that was a caution, or that's part of protecting the city, that if Lynn and I go astray and start putting stuff on there, then you have some recourse in this.
Anyway, I take your secret crypto password.
There you go. You gave away a password, let's change that tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right, any other discussion on the resolution? If not, I'll call for a, we'll call a vote on it. Councilmember Dumas?
Aye.
Councilmember Elwood?
Aye.
Councilmember Graves?
Aye.
Councilmember Mills?
Aye.
Councilmember Finman? Right, the resolution passes? How did, how did, Jerry?
Aye.
Okay. All in favor, Mr. Mayor? Right, the resolution passes. And to give me that, I'll sign that. All right, I think that's the end of the agenda. Any public comments?
I have one that I received via communication, media communication. Social media communication.
Is it relevant to the agenda items for tonight?
Actually, it is, I think, it's relative to police protection, and I'd like to pass copies of it and read it into the record, if you don't mind.
Okay.
This is from Dom Duramus, and he sent it on September twenty-sixth to me. And I'll read it into the record, and I, I think it's a kind of an important issue for y'all to be aware of. Linda, there's an issue that needs to be resolved that maybe some are unaware of concerning law enforcement in our area. Everyone in Carroll County knows there is no sheriff on duty or available to respond in our area during the weekends. The back streets of Holiday Island from the entrance off Highway twenty-three near Missouri-Arkansas line through Wild Turkey and surrounding streets, then back to twenty-three, have become the grand prix for the sports motorcycles, known better as crotch rockets, racing through the streets at high speeds. Once, what is going on, twice, becoming repetitive, three time, time to put an end to this before someone or some pets get hurt. This Sunday was enough, and now something must be done. If we can't have an officer on call Saturday and Sunday, then the contract with the Carroll County Sheriff isn't worth the money as it leaves Holiday Island, as it leaves Holiday Island vulnerable to the area thugs and thieves. My question, who has to get hurt or robbed on the weekend before Holiday Island has reliable law enforcement? I'm sure you and others have tossed this issue around before contracting with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office, but wouldn't it be cheaper to have one car equipped or outfitted as a Holiday Island police car and hire a day, night, and weekend off-duty officers or Eureka Police to use that patrol car? Except for Aaron, I have never seen another sheriff's officer in the back part of Holiday Island off of Wild Turkey State Line and all connecting streets patrolling. There are many good people with nice homes that deserve the same protection benefits as those living in the higher populated areas of Holiday Island. Please address this lawless issue of racing crotch rockets, high-performance motorcycles, using the back streets of Holiday Island as a grand prix racetrack. And then I responded to him and told him I would bring it up at the meeting, and I encouraged him to be here, but he has some health issues that kind of prevent him from getting out a lot, so he declined to come tonight. But he sent me another message, just to clarify. These motorcycles aren't vacationing riders, but noisy race bikes, known as crotch rockets, rode by locals of the surrounding area. So the, I, I had written back to him that, you know, I knew that we had a lot of bike, biker people that came and vacationed here, and that's what I was envisioning he was talking about. Apparently not. Apparently, these are locals. And I, I just thought this would be worth talking about a little bit, or at least, you know, considering when we're going to be bringing about this contract with the Sheriff's Department, getting two deputies now out here. At least we could insist that they have some weekend coverage and go to some of those back roads during those appropriate times, and maybe also encourage people who, who might see these types of bikes racing around to call that into dispatch when they see them.
You have to note, consider, folks, that are in South Florida.
Well, he, he seemed to know they were local somehow or another.
Well, most of the people come in.
And they're a different type of motorcycle than the vacationers bring out here.
Most of the ones that come in are like cruisers.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, it's, it's a valid point, and it's one of the reasons why we're adding a second deputy, is that we know we're not getting the coverage we need.
I think he lives in Indian Hills.
Yes.
Yeah, he lives in one.
He lives in Indian Hills.
But even with, even with two, you know, even with two deputies, we have seventy miles of road here.
Yeah.
It's going to be pretty difficult to catch somebody in the ass.
Yeah.
Pretty difficult, so, well.
But if they call it in when somebody sees it, if people call it in, it's more likely to get caught.
Yeah. I thought, well, we will definitely have this discussion with, with the sheriff.
Thank you.
Second deputy. Okay, any other comments? Public or otherwise?
All right, just one thing, I've already told you that we're supposed to have a meeting tomorrow, six, our chief of the new state of Oklahoma broadband directory to talk about this, this round of broadband money. I got a email Friday, and it was that meetings have been canceled, that they had owed out seventy million dollars, not all of the money, but another round, but not one dime of this. That money came to Carroll County. They determined that we have active coverage. And, I mean, it's that's all I can report now, there will be another round. But, and you know, the way they determine that is that the bribe they can do, whatever it is, it's always in the bribe. Twenty-five, two, or whatever it is. And that does have the coverage. That surveying we did, that showed that there were ten points, we should have had the slow streets, one of the other lines. About half and a half, and then half, you know.
Well, all we can do is before we put them out. Um, there's another follow-up item. I had a meeting with the, with the postmaster in Eureka Springs today, who called me asking for a copy of the, of the, of for information on city boundaries, and so that they could determine all of the street addresses that are inside the city of Holiday Island. all of the street addresses that are inside the city limits of Holiday Island. So I brought him a, uh, our city map, when you print it out, it's like this big. And even with a magnifying glass, you can't read the legal description. I gave him a thumb drive with the, uh, the PDF on it that they can blow up so that they can get the legal description. But I also gave him that file that you sent me.
The GIS, this came from.
Every property has its corresponding address in Holiday Island. And I gave him our list of every property and the corresponding street address that was used for nine-one-one. So with those three documents, he, they ought to be able to easily determine what addresses are inside the city limits of Holiday Island, what all the streets are. Um, they had, this was in response or reaction to a large meeting that they had. He said there was about eight or ten people there, um, managers and, you know, people from all over the postal office. And they were, they were even talking about a county town having the same problems we are. And kind of the postal office's position is they're willing to help, but tax collection is a state problem, not a postal service problem. And, uh, they're, they're, like I said, they're willing to help, they're willing to take a look at it, but they say the problem with doing what we want to do, where we just make Holiday Island a primary, that will solve the immediate problem of us not paying Eureka Springs sales tax. But it won't solve the problem if Holiday Island ever imposes a city sales tax. Because all of the rural routes from the Holiday Island postal office would carry the same zip code. So if you lived out by Beaver or by Bush or, you know, Inspiration Point, you would end up paying Holiday Island sales tax.
So are they paying Eureka now?
Yeah, they are.
I mean, those rural areas are paying Eureka taxes now? Well, that's, which, which would be worse, paying Holiday Island taxes or Eureka taxes?
You know, I, I, I don't, you know, I don't, um, you know.
We would be saving them money.
I give, I give them credit for trying to correct, you know, be, be correct in their solution. Not just at the end of the immediate problem, but a month of the long-term fix. And of course, their long-term fix is use a four-digit extension, problem solved. But they got to get the state to agree to use the four-digit extension when they collect the taxes. And that's the rub right now between the postal service and the state. So there is activity going on, uh, I was glad that they, that they're having meetings on it. He said there's actually four locations in the state that are going through that, us and county town, and he couldn't remember the other two. But there's four locations that have the same problem.
Well, along that line, I'll respond, I was working this afternoon to get set up with ATAP, which is who do you pay state taxes, like state withholding and sales taxes to online? And I was having trouble getting logged in, I could not register to do that. And I called them and finally the gal told me, "Well, I was using the nine-digit zip code, and if I'd only use the five-digit zip code now would work."
Really?
So, well, at least there'd be a chance they would use the nine-digit zip code.
Probably, I thought there was only one, or there's a hundred of them.
Yeah.
It's all kind of a little bit of a ritual, you know. Um, anyway.
Well, we, we did not bring out the sales tax issue in that letter. It was never mentioned, it didn't mention about. We left with the meeting, we're both, they're, they're, they're trying to eject something, it wasn't in the reflection. They're trying to address the complaints that are coming, though. All right, any other comments? Motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Linda made a motion to adjourn, Lynn seconded it, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned?